We call this meeting of Lima City Council to order. We'll begin tonight's meeting with the invocation by Councilor Nieper, followed by the pledge of allegiance.
Heavenly Father, watch over us this evening as we come together to act in the best interests of the residents of the city of Lima. We pray for peace in Syria and a peaceful resolution to the conflicts all around the world. In your son's name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The clerk will call a roll.
Mr. Nieper.
Here.
Claim.
Here.
Mr. Lowe.
Here.
Mr. Tevin.
Here.
Ms. Adams.
Here.
Mr. Glenn.
Here.
Ms. Townsend.
Here.
And Mr. Nixon.
Here. Are there any amendments to tonight's agenda?
Yes, Mr. Nixon, I move to amend tonight's agenda to remove Kat Coons-Born from privilege of the floor to reports of officials, and that reports of officials be brought to the beginning of the agenda after privilege of the floor.
Second. The motion, the second, is to move Kat Coons-Born from privilege of the floor to reports of officials, and to move reports of officials to follow privilege of the floor on the agenda. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. Under privilege of the floor, Mary Lydell, UNOH student activity.
Good evening, my name is Mary Lydell, and I'm here to discuss the activity of the UNOH students. This has been an ongoing problem. I'm the type of person that acts and does not wait for others to act for me. I ask others if they wanted to speak about this issue, and I was told, of course, no, I don't want to get involved. I know that young people act up, and so do students from other schools, but this has gotten way out of control. I see and hear so much with, "Oh, UNOH students." I have had rude treatment several times now from some students. I am always nice and friendly when I am out and when I'm in public. Many people express issues such as parking wrong, racing car engines peeling out, loud and rude behavior, and swearing at people. When classes let out, they speed down the road, revving car engines, almost causing accidents. I have seen this numerous times. Sometimes I have seen them throw trash in parking lots, such as Walmart's vacant parking lot now where they're hanging out. One night when I was going over the railroad tracks at the back of the school area, the red lights were flashing, and this boy in a pickup truck starts shouting obscenities at me, saying, "Get my butt across the tracks," blah, blah, blah. I went across the tracks after I was stopped like I was supposed to. I was highly offended at that. I have heard these issues from many other people over the years, but it has gotten worse. This is where we live. This is my hometown and your hometown, and I feel that we should not be subjected to such poor behavior. Our city already has people badmouthing it, and these actions only pull our city down more. Several women I know were made fun of. I cannot use the language that was told to them, but they were told, more or less, they were fat and ugly and would never get a boyfriend. Only, it was said in a much more degrading and demeaning way. One day when I was having a bad day about a week ago, I pulled up to a light, a cable on Allentown Road. My window was down because it was a warm night. A car full of these students pulled up beside of me. First, they said hi. Being a friendly person, I said hi back. The next thing that came out of their mouth, there's no way I can repeat here, it was that vile insults to me, sexual indwinds. It just ruined my day. I was in tears, and I thought, why? Why is this going on? Due to this issue, again, it is causing Lima to have a poor reputation. I do not hear these things about Ohio State, the University of Northwa-- I'm sorry, OHNU or Bluffton. It is really hurting Lima. Many people know this. Many people feel as I do. All students act up in certain ways from all schools, but how would you like it, or anybody else, that if your mother or daughter or sister was in my place that night in that car and subjected to what they said to me? No one should be have to go through that.
Ms. Lydell, our rules allow three minutes, and we're at three minutes.
Okay, I'm sorry.
It's possible that the issue could be referred to a committee for further study, okay? And we'll have-- can you leave your address with the clerk if you have your address? We'll notify you of that meeting.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you.
Mr. President.
Next on--
Mr. President.
Mr. Glenn.
Yes, I have something to say. And I understand you're right, it's not the first time we have problems with the students, and it's something that we got to look into, and I think the administration needs to get more involved with this, too. And I understand that Northwestern is outstanding, different economic development in our area, but we still got to-- we can't let a few bad students spoil the whole reputation of the school, because Dr. Jarvis and them doing an excellent job out there. So we do need to get them involved, and you're not the first one who came up here. We had problems last year, the following year, but I think the school needs to get involved with this. And I think we should, as city councils, should send a letter to them, letting them know they need to meet and find out what's going on, because we can't pick out the student that did that. You know, there's thousands of them, you know, and they make the school look bad. But I apologize to you, you had to live that way in your home. It's your taxpayer and the city of Lima. So I want to take that apology for you, but I know the school's not going to tolerate that kind of conduct. Thank you, Mr. President.
Next, under privilege of the floor is Tim Guthrie regarding finances. Again, I'll remind you that council rules allow for three minutes for privilege of the floor.
Tim Guthrie, 111 Belvidere, Lima High, and I want to say, I really wish I didn't have to be up here, because I don't think the city council is doing their duty for Lima, for the Lima taxpayers. Now, by the way, all these figures I'm going to read off, I took the city auditor, and he said they're spot on. And if I run out of time, since you probably won't talk to me, I want to talk-- I want an answer from Mr. Nixon and Mayor Berger. What number on my list, what salary do you think it should stop at? The excessive amounts of money that our mayor's making. I already said, last week, that a lot of these people aren't here. Mayor Berger gets elected, he's going to make $518,000 for four years. $518,000 for four years. That's a lot of money for Lima. He's going to get $15,000 just in pay increases. Now, if you work at the state, eat your heart out, because you're not getting any raises. He'll make $15,000 in four years in raises. Now, it was Mayor Berger, who just last year during the 2012 budget, wanted to take two city health care-- city workers' health care away from him. He spoke that, I heard him say it. But now, it's okay for him to make $518,000 in four years? Taxpayers' money. And nobody on city council's saying a word? Even the conservatives that say they are? In the four years after that, $583,000. Five hundred-- and you guys argue with the city people who want their sidewalks paid? $583,000 for the next four-year term. And after that four-year term, $657,000 for four years? $657,000 the mayor of Lima's going to make. Thirty-nine thousand. Medium income in Lima is $29,000. And a year after that, this will be the 20th year, $739,000. $739,000 for Lima. And Mr. Berger thinks it's okay. He told me he deserves to make this much money on the Mike Miller Show. And I know you think it's humorous, Mr. Nixon, but I really don't. So are you going to give me an answer, which one of those numbers, or do I have to wait around and ask you after the meeting tonight when you drop-- gabble it over? Which one of those do you think that the taxpayers should have to quit paying all that money?
Mr. Guthrie, you are past your three minutes.
Please?
You are past your three minutes.
Thank you, sir. And I will ask you after the meeting, you and you, what numbers? Because I want to know.
Thank you. Next, we have reports of officials. And first, under reports of officials is Rick Stahle, the summer wrap-up, and Lima Locos Executive Board.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of council. It's good to be here. Wanted to give you a little summer recap from 2013, let you know some of the programming, and then give you a little forecast of what we're looking forward with this coming winter, some of the things that are happening. So the playground program, eight-week program, again, this year, very successful. We're very happy, very pleased with our rec leaders, our leader twos, and our coordinators. Terrific job, leader ones, all did a terrific job. We did, we asked a lot of these folks this year. We did a lot of getting out and seeing what was in Lima and beyond Lima a little bit. Of course, we were at the Allen County Museum, went out to Rhodes and OSU. Two trips that we made that we got a lot of feedback on were the equestrian therapy program, and got the kids down to the Neil Armstrong Museum this year, and was just a terrific opportunity. So when you start moving 200 kids around, it gets a little challenging, but our staff was up to it and did a terrific job. We had a lot of information with science and tech activities, you know, health and wellness, all the life skills that come with that program. Just a terrific, terrific job this year. I was very, very pleased with the group, they pulled it together. Some of the things that we look at, you know, with those kids, each year we find one or two, and we're trying to find a little bit more in the more recent years, that have gone through our program, that come back and now are in college and want to work the summer. That program meant so much to them. They come back and do a great job for us, and we really appreciate their efforts. I always tell them the two toughest days of the program are the first day, when they're just trying to figure everything out, and then the last day, when you've got to say goodbye to those kids that you've been with for eight weeks. It's a tough thing to do. There's a lot of tears shed with the little ones, and a few with the older guys and gals, because they have really connected and bonded, and that is a program that just continues to give back to this community. We're very pleased to be a big part of making that happen for the city. Our youth tennis program, in partnership with the Miami Tennis Association, had about 130 kids there. They were on Tuesdays and Thursday mornings over at College Street. Youth softball and baseball programs, again, very successful league that starts in May and goes through, up to about the Fourth of July this year. We wrapped it up, I think it was actually on the third. Adult softball league just wrapping up, about three weeks ago. Again, a lot of fun. Few injuries this year with some of our over-50 guys, but, you know, that's to be understood. I mean, you've got to pay attention to that stuff. So that programming is alive and well. School report is a very busy place this summer, even with six and a half inches of rain that we got in July. Our numbers are down a little bit, but, you know, it was a very successful summer. Our dances in the park series, Carolyn Dietrich and the group out at Lincoln Park do such a great job out there. The concerts in the park series, totals, I think, right around 3,100 folks attended that event, or those events at Frot. Rally in the square that we participate with, art space, and of course, Square Fair, and the big one on the Fourth of July, the Star Spangled Spectacular. Even though we got a little wet this year, it was still very well-attended, and looking forward to year number 21 for that. We had a movie in the park series that was sponsored this year. We were one of the venues. We actually did that on the Third of July, and we did it on the west end of Frot Park this year. Last year, we were at Rob, and the year before that, at Dr. Martin Luther King Park, and before that, I think we had did two of them. One at Lincoln and one at Rob. But what a great opportunity to get out and enjoy a terrific movie in the park, and we had a real nice crowd for Sandlot. I think we showed back on July 3rd, and people really seemed to enjoy that. And I want to thank McDonald's and Superior, and those folks who helped sponsor that event that traveled about Lima and Allen County this past summer. It's always good to get people out and enjoy things like that. Our shuttle reservations are pretty close to where we were last year at this time. Those numbers stay pretty close each and every year. They fluctuate up and down a little bit, but we're pretty much in the same ballpark. All of our partnerships that we have, you know, every time I look back at this, I got to stop and think, you know, wow, we really partner with this many people, doing this many, you know, this many things in the city. It's, you know, our activities that take place on our fields and our courts, our diamonds, the YMCA T-ball, the soccer, the flag football, the use of our facilities from the high school levels, with baseball, tennis, cross-country. Matter of fact, next Tuesday, October the 1st, if you've got some time, and you want to see an event, the Allen County Cross Country Meet will be hosted, again, this year at Frot Park. It'll start about 4:00 in the afternoon, and involves junior high and high school. Kids from all over the county coming into Lima for a great day of running there at Frot. We are the host for county tournaments, or county and league invitational tournament sites, all those things that bring people to Lima. Again, you know, our men's and women's city tennis tournament that takes place here in the city at College Street, weather permitting. So just, as we look at all these things that take place in our city, at our recreational sites and our parks, it is truly amazing. You know, while all that's going on, we're still trying to do all the things that we do in maintaining those facilities. And so when we look at that, 380 acres of land and a river walk and all the things that come with it, of course, this year, we really went after the square, tried to, with your help, you know, fund that process, and I think we've had great results with that. So you can't do those things if you don't have dedicated and highly motivated staff of individuals who want to make a difference, and then the volunteers that add to that, you know, from the Eagle Scout projects that go on, our church organizations, our neighborhood associations, all those folks that step up and be a part of, want to be a part of what we're doing. Before I go into what we got coming up, I would like to take a minute to one of those partnerships that we have with the Lima Locos that we started about six years ago. Actually, probably started seven years ago, but then moved into the summer before we actually got it going. But they've spent six years at Simmons Field, six very productive years in our eyes, and as far as getting people out to enjoy a recreational opportunity, that not everybody has the money to run off to Cleveland, or Detroit, or Cincinnati, or even Toledo, or Dayton, to go to ballgames. You've got a chance to watch some great baseball, and the job that the Lima Locos have done, and since they've been here in Lima, you know, I think there's been, I know of one championship since they've been back in the city. And I'd like to introduce Steve Meyer. He's got members of his executive board with him tonight. Steve, you want to introduce our executive board? Do you want to come on up, or you want, whatever you want?
I'm Steve Meyer. The last time I stood here, we were talking about a championship season, so this past summer, we were able to get runners up, bring that back to Lima, so thank you for that. To my right is Rob Richardson, school teacher at YLDA. To his right is Kathy Altenbaugh. She's an LCC Lima school member, and she does our house family coordination. And Dr. Mike Spurlock, one of our team physicians. Who isn't here is Dr. Bill Leahy. He's on vacation. But it's a 10-month project for us. You heard me say before, it's a labor of love, and, you know, the team comes in, and they think that we put this thing together a month before, but it's the four or five of us, plus about 100 other people. You come out to a game, you see adults working the concession stand, the Lima residents, it is, it's just a huge, fun thing, and it's happening right over there at Simmons Field. Just a couple highlights, Rick, I don't have much time on my head.
Yep.
We were second in attendance for the leg out of all the teams, which is a great thing. You know, the players around the leg love to come to Lima. Simmons Field, the backstop sits right on top of the bench, so it's kind of a fan favorite thing, and our Lima fans are loyal, let's say that. But it is a neat thing. Looking around the room, I've seen a lot of familiar faces out there. We've had some people from far away, Sacramento, California, last year. All these kids come in from clearly all over and stay with us for about two months in Lima. And then all the teams come in from all around the two, three states that we play. They stay in a hotel. Now, I give them a list of hotels, and, you know, they set that up. We had, for those of you that are baseball guys, we had Buster Posey's little brother. Buster Posey's a major league catcher for the San Francisco Giants. His little brother plays for the University of Georgia, was here. One of our outfielders from the University of Toledo set a single-season stolen-base record history of the leg. You're talking most 30 years. Tyler Drogg, his parents, wonderful people, came to the game. I've got my notes, so I was prepared to come up.
Come on up.
And I'll just talk right here, Rick.
Okay.
That's basically it.
Better than you thought you were, right?
You missed one guy, got drafted to Pittsburgh Pirates.
Yes.
Now you've got to say that.
Yes. You know, I'll follow your lead on that. As a general manager in charge of recruiting and all the on-field stuff, 26 transactions we had this year. Put that in perspective, usually average about six per year. A transaction for us is, you know, the position sent them home because they're injured, or they get drafted, and you guys read about them in the morning paper, the radio, or something, and guess what? We have to replace them, you know? So call around and talk to all the collars all over the country, talk to Kathy and say, Kathy, I got another name for you, you're going to have to call that one. So that's how that works, but thank you, Mr. Glenn, for reminding me of that. So it's a lot of fun. We do it, we all love baseball, and we just love what Lima has to offer, and the kids come in, and, you know, our town, our city, they get treated like old, and it's yes, sir, no, sir, you know, from these kids. We tell them that, we meet with them, and they're very respectful. They know what they're doing. They're up here to build a baseball resume. You know, they're up here for a mission, and that's to play on TV someday. So thank you for everything, and a really special thanks to Rick and his staff, from the heart. I mean, there's, we had seven rainouts this year, where between Rick and his people and me trying to push off water. Dr. Leahy and I came home from one game, was literally out at Simmons Field at like 3:00 in the morning, pushing water off to try to play that playoff game the next day. So it is a labor of love, and without you guys and talking about it, we couldn't do it this year. So thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Anyone have any questions for the Locos while they're here? I've got to tell you, the effort that these folks, Steve's kind of quiet about, and so are they, very humble people, but there are literally hundreds of thousands of dollars in those dugouts every summer, in scholarship money that these kids have at the universities that they play at. It is absolutely amazing, you know, what they're, you know, what they have, you know, what they're coming to do, and what they do when they get here. And I've been privileged to actually house some players for the last six years. And I can't, I just can't say no to Kathy when she calls. You've got room for one more. Yeah, that's what my wife needs, is one more son in that house for the summer, but somehow it works. And it's been a great experience. My kids still stay in touch with these young men. They've gone out, they're now out of college, the early ones are out of college, and they're working in the business world and doing things in their communities, giving back to their communities, and they're great examples, but they come back. I still have them coming back to my house, coming back, and when they're either over the holidays or sometime during the summer to watch a Loco's game, if they're coming through, they stay connected. They enjoy their experience in Lima, and it's because it's a first-class organization, and they surround themselves with pretty good people to make it happen, so.
Mr. President, if I may, I'd like to just make a comment. Rick and I have talked earlier in the season. I was able to attend a couple games this year, and thoroughly enjoyed them. Saw the young man steal some bases, and I saw a homerun from your first baseman, gentleman that I think's still flying. I mean, he cracked that hard. But what I was impressed with were the citizens, the nursing homes, the rest homes that bring patients, residents, and how much they light up and enjoy it, and either reliving their youth, but seeing young men enjoying themselves playing a game that they obviously love. I also coordinated, having talked to Rick and hearing about the field at Wright State, I coordinated a trip to see some family members in Dayton, to see the Locos play the Dayton Ducks, and to see the field down there, and I was very impressed. But Simmons Field is, you know, second to none, and I, with the people that are in attendance and the enthusiasm, I was very impressed. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Ms. President.
Thank you, Counselor. It's a great asset, there's no doubt about it. It's a great asset for Lima and Lima community, and we want to continue to build on that asset and do the things that we can do to make that opportunity for the residents of Lima the best opportunity, and one of the best experiences for the folks coming into Lima, because that might be the only window that they see the city of Lima as. So again, it is one of those things that we like to tout about. It's a great partnership. Next up for us, our youth boys, girls volleyball signups are wrapping up. Those are fifth and sixth grade girls. Will be getting into our boys and girls basketball signups here in October, and that'll carry us through the, starting in December, and then carry us through first part of March, wrapping up that process with the tournament. The final thing, and I'll be back to the spring report on how those events go for us. The final thing I need to remind you of, and the Lima community, is, again, we're back in the, you know, there's a lot of activity in the parks, you know, from the things I just mentioned. Please pay attention to your driving in and around the park. Lima community needs to pay attention to that. There's just a lot of kids with midget football and cross-country, and just people out, you know, perusing the area. Just please be careful when you're driving through and around our parks. The other event I have to announce tonight is, I stood up here last year about this time, and we talked about Halloween, and it was actually six days off of the actual date. If you remember, I told you next year it'll actually be on the 31st. About five or six years ago, I was asked to try to coordinate with the surrounding townships and villages to get it on the same date, and we've managed to do that, and we've been pretty successful the last five years. For the city of Lima will be Thursday, October 31st, from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. Now, that may, that time may fluctuate with some of the other surrounding areas, but it's the same night. Ours is 6:00 to 8:00, so, and those will all be published, I'm sure, in the papers as we get closer, but we've already started getting calls at our office wanting to know what that date is. If you want to be involved, again, we ask you to turn your porch lights on and be attentive to the kids when you're traversing around the area on that evening, Thursday, the 31st of October. That's all I've got. Any questions? Answers for any of you? We'll be in touch. Thank you all very much.
Appreciate it. Next is Kat Coons-Born regarding the Humane Society update on the CAT program.
Do have some handouts for folks. I hadn't intended to be the speaker this evening. We were going to have our new executive director come here and address you. As you may or may not be aware, Michael Lee, who originally proposed this to council, has resigned as executive director of the Humane Society. He was burning the candle at both ends with his part-time gig as a director, and then working as a vice president of Dad's Insurance Company. That company is growing to the point where he couldn't do both anymore, so he did resign. We do have a new executive director, our operations manager, has stepped into that role, Alicia Phillips. However, she had a family emergency this evening and could not be here. I was going to introduce her. I was going to introduce her and then get out of the way, but it's gonna be my show. Also, we were anticipating a privilege of the floor event as opposed to a full-blown presentation, so this is probably gonna be kind of quick. What you have in front of you is, if you turn to the second page, is our numbers so far. Now, as you know, we came to you early in the year and requested your support. Tony Geiger had come to us, Paige Townsend had come to us and proposed, hey, would you be interested? We came to you and we're very, very thankful that you gave us your support. And of course, the stipulation was we had to raise the rest of the money. That took a little longer than our rather overly optimistic Mr. Lee anticipated, so we did get a bit of a late start. To date, however, we have worked in three of the wards so far. That would be Ward Two, Five, and One. We are still finishing up in Ward One this week. Presently, from the wards as a whole, we've handled 140 cats. Fifty-one of them were kittens between four and nine months of age. Fifty were adult females and thirty-nine were adult males. Eighteen of the animals tested positive for one disease or another, the big two, feline AIDS and feline leukemia, and had to be humanely euthanized, and they were. We have found homes, it says here, we found homes for eight adults and nine kittens. There's actually more than that. If you've been following our Facebook page, there are a handful of others that we did bring into the shelter because our agreement with you is if they are adoptable, we will get them adopted. We did bring all of those in that we could, that were deemed adoptable. Seventeen have gone out. As of this report, these stats, which are, I will say, at least a week or two old, few more have found homes since then. If you follow our Facebook page, whenever a Operation Catnip cat is adopted, we do make note of that this cat came from Operation Catnip. So it's very clear that this is where that animal came from. We have trapped, as I said, 140 cats. We will be finishing Ward One this week, and we are going to be moving into Ward Seven to deal with the Fernwood area, which is a fairly significant colony in that area. You may recall that our budget was 50 cats per ward. Since we wanted to equalize what we're doing with each ward, we are holding to that 50 cats per ward number. We do realize that in some of your wards, there's a heck of a lot more than 50 cats. We're aware of that. We encourage you very, very strongly to keep letting us know where those problems areas are. When we get through the 350 that we had targeted for this year, we will go back. If we don't hit 350, let's say we don't get 50 for every ward, we have room in the budget for the rest of it. We will go back and start over and start hitting those other areas as well. But please keep us informed where those are. We'll put them on the list and get to them. If not this year, this is going to be an ongoing project for us regardless of if you see fit to, and we hope you do, continue to support us. We are actively seeking out grants right now for the next calendar year to keep moving forward with this. It's a huge problem in our community, and we're bound and determined to try and get a handle on it. But it is going to take years to get a handle on it. It's not gonna go away overnight. I wish it would, but it just can't. There's too many of them and too many people that are not able to spay neuter their pets, financially speaking, or just are not of the mindset where they think that's appropriate. There's a lot of education that still needs to be done, and we're working on that. The rest of the pages you have in front of you are some photography of the project. You can see some, the third page, some cute little fuzzy faces looking out at you from various cages. The fourth page, these are the testing kits that we are using to test for feline AIDS and feline leukemia. Those are highly contagious diseases. They are not fun. Animals do suffer quite a bit if they do contract those. And as we said, we would do when we find an animal that tests positive with one of those ailments, they will be humanely euthanized. We don't want them to suffer, and we don't want them to spread that disease to someone's household pet either. They're very contagious, so we want to make sure we jump on that. The rest of it is various photography of our vets working with the animals to do the spay and neutering. Each animal is ear tipped. Corner of one ear is removed so that if that animal turns up in a trap later on, we'll know we already spayed or neutered that animal. We won't get them into the clinic, shave their tummies, put them out with anesthesia, and then go, oops, we already did this one. So that's going to save time and that's going to save money. In regards to the traps, we have had some problems. We've had some traps stolen by residents of the city. We have had other traps stuffed with towels and various things so the cat cannot get in them. We've had them picked up from the area where they were placed, tossed into bushes, vandalized. So we have to replace those traps when this happens, of course, because they're usually too damaged to use again. So we're not just saying, oh, well, that one we don't have anymore. We are getting them replaced. So that has thrown us off target as well. But when you look at the fact that we were gold for 350 cats in the course of one year, and we've taken care of 140 so far, and the fact that all of the people, Ms. Adams, that you saw come to the TNR training programs, never showed back up when we told them we were gonna be in their area and could you please help us? We have four people, mostly, well, three staff members and one of them is a child of one staff member, who are going out and setting these traps and getting these cats. If any of you can help when we're in your wards, please, we would love it if you could help monitor some traps for us, help us set the traps, work with us on it. It would make a huge help. And if you have anyone in your ward that is caring for a colony that you know of, put them in touch with us. We will also work with them to train them and help trap these animals and get them under control. Again, it's gonna take a few years to do because it is such a humongous problem. At the end of the year, which is the end of our contract year, we will come back in December, and we will have a whole PowerPoint sung and dance with all kinds of other information on it. Right now, we wanted to get you, as we said we would do, a quarterly report for where we are to date, and this is where we are right now. I'd be happy to at least attempt to answer any questions that you may have, being that I'm not the executive director, and she's got more in her head about it than I do.
Mr. President.
Mr. Low.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you for coming out tonight, speaking on such short notice, but I got a question for you.
Sure.
How much is one trap costing you?
Well, we do have an individual that's making the traps for us.
Those that's in the picture?
Yes, those ones that are in the picture. Some of them we had already, but then we had others constructed. Our vet assistant's dad is extremely handy person, and he has built a number of the traps. And I think he can build them for under $25 with the materials.
Okay. My question to you is, and this is done in other cities.
Mm-hmm.
At $25 would bring in five cats, and you wouldn't have to worry about a trap at all. Is there any way that a program could be initiated where if individuals see stray cats, where they could bring them into you?
We could work with that.
And maybe be paid $5 or $10 a cat? And that would save it costs, they can get their shots, they can get neutered, or they could do, run your test or whatever?
Mm-hmm.
And once they know they're fine, you clip their ears, they go back?
We could, that would be a lesson learned for next year, certainly.
Instead of you having only three people trying to cover the whole city?
Right.
I'm just saying, I don't know if you-
We can talk about it. Yeah, I think it's a great idea, and logistically, we would have to look into that and see what we could do, but there are gonna be a lot of lessons learned in this year that we can apply to last year.
We'll have a lot of cats that next day when you announce.
Yeah. We have, yeah, we will. The problem with, that's not gonna work with the ferals, though. The strays that are sociable, people can get a hold of. The ferals, we're still gonna need to trap, obviously. But I think that's a good idea. I'll definitely take it back to the team and see what we can work out for that and let you know what they let me know. I'll get back to you on that one. Anybody else?
Mr. President?
Ms. Adams?
Are you?
I'm sorry, you done, Mr. Low? Okay, Ms. Adams?
Thank you. Since you referenced me in part of this report.
Yes, ma'am.
And I'm seeing here where you're done in the fifth ward, and I can name five locations that have not been contacted. And two of them are people that are willing to, they're feeding the feral cats.
Mm-hmm.
They're on a routine, but they're feral. I mean, they run when this person comes.
Okay.
But they come to the food.
Yeah, that's typically the definition.
Exactly.
I get that, sure.
And they're willing to work and have these surrendered. She has not been contacted, and we're probably talking, I know we're talking to new litter. I stood there about three months ago with the kittens walking around my feet, you know, of these feral cats, and she's got another colony in her garage.
And you've given that address to Alicia, I understand? Yes?
Yes.
Okay.
I've ever, all these locations, and I'm getting calls from these residents that were enthused about the program, wanted to work with them, your volunteers, your staff, and they're like, where are they?
Well, I can tell you, I don't know exactly what addresses they worked on to get the 50 cats they've gotten out of your ward, but they did get 50 cats out of your ward. So I know she's aware of those addresses because you've left her messages to that effect, and they are on the list. Your area is one of the most highly populated, and what we want to do next year, just to teaser for next year, what we want to do next year is not, and this may not make everybody happy, but not set a certain number per ward, but actually go by census. So, Ms. Adams, if your ward has the most cats, we're gonna target your ward, like all of your ward in the high-population areas. We're gonna do what's called a population sweep. The way this was pitched to counsel and what you approved was 50 cats per ward. I can tell you, we have gotten 50 cats out of your ward.
Do you have the addresses?
I do not personally, but I will get that for you, and I will get that back to you. I will guarantee I'll get you that address.
Another thing I want to address, you'd mentioned the training, which I did attend.
Yes.
And Michael was the director, executive director at the time, and he conducted the training.
Yes.
And I was prepared, and still am, to assist, you know, I know it's late hours, early mornings. I never got a call. I didn't know you were in my ward.
I will follow up on that with the staff and ask them why they did not contact you, because they should have.
Yeah, they should have. I was anxious, excited, attended the training, and I thought, okay, you know, I wanna maybe take a nap early, because, you know, be out late-
It is an overnight event, yes.
It is, and I'm prepared to do that and was. But I never got a call. I never knew you were in my ward.
I will apologize profusely for that, and I will find out what the heck happened there.
But on behalf of the other people that attended those trainings, they may not know you're there either.
They may not. We've also had a turnover in the volunteer coordinator who was keeping that list, and no one seems, I don't want to make excuses, because that's what it sounds like, but no one seems to know where that list is right now.
Another number shot.
All I can tell you off, from what I have here and from what I've seen myself, is I do know we've processed 140 animals to date, and we've worked in three of the wards.
And when I've talked to Michael, you know, he kept, you know, he'd mark it on the map, you know, the locations, either I was calling in, being told by a resident, or I was directing residents to call in.
We do have a large map of all the city wards on the wall, and we do have an awful lot of stickies in your area. So I know they are marked. I will get you the address of where they have been and where they got those 50 cats out of your ward.
Because I want to be able to answer the-
Of course.
-five or six residents that participated.
Sure.
Anxious to get this issue for the health of the cats as well.
Oh, definitely.
This is a hard life.
The average life expectancy of an outdoor animal is two to three years.
And the one lady I recently spoke to, I said, if you're in my ward, let me know, and if I can, I will drop what I'm doing to go with you, to talk to the residents, to explain the program, you know, just in support.
Can you get me a list of when the neighborhood associations in your ward meet, and then I can make sure somebody's there to help with the education?
I can tell you right now, Midway East.
Midway East? Okay.
Meets on the third Thursday of every month at 7:00 p.m. at their center on Kibbe Street, 727 Kibbe. And Hope Neighborhood Meeting, which I was gonna announce tonight, meets on the first Tuesday of every month at 6:30 at Unity Elementary School.
Okay.
And one of those locations that I am unaware that you were at and have heard from residents is a massive colony on Catalpa. And they're talking 20-plus cats that are roaming this area. And the residents, you know, I've heard from many along their route of these cats, calling that location in, and I passed it on to Michael.
Yes. One of the things I can tell you is that when we get through one cycle in all the wards, if we don't, let's say we hit a ward that for some reason we don't get 50 cats out of, I can tell you that due to the population problem in your ward, which by numbers is greater than everybody else's, even though everyone else's is pretty significant too, when we do recycle back around to meet our 350 cats for the year, your ward is high on that list, if not at the top of that list, to pick up the remaining cats because of those problems. And I'm not aware personally of the Catalpa address, but I will check the map and make sure that is on there.
There's a massive blocks of, you know, where they roam from and to.
They have a wide territory, they, yeah, they do.
But I mean, it's a ritual. I mean, these people, even though they're feral.
Are people feeding them in that one? Yeah, we need to get into the neighborhood associations, and we're not, we have not, I will say, have not done that as well as I had hoped we would. Get to the neighborhood associations and educate the caregivers and educate people who aren't technically caregivers but still say, oh, cute kitty, and put food out.
Right.
That doesn't help the problem, so we do have to do that.
And I think one reason, because of my training through your organization, I took it to the neighborhood association.
Thank you for doing that.
And I spoke on your behalf and-
Thank you for doing that.
-promoted the program to where I think that's why we're leading, because people participated.
Sure.
To their credit, you know, and now they're sitting there disappointed. That's why I'd like to see the addresses of where you have been.
I will get those for you.
I don't doubt that you were there, I'm sorry.
But it would help you respond to your constituents if you knew.
Exactly.
I will get you that address, those addresses.
And I'm sorry I wasn't able to assist, but I didn't know anytime you were in my ward. That's why I started inquiring.
Sure.
You know, what's going on, because I knew the traps were being made, and I just wanted to get a status, because I thought, I'm ready to help.
Sure.
And-
I will get you that address, ma'am.
I appreciate it.
I will do that personally.
And thank you for coming tonight.
Mr. President?
Mr. Glenn?
Yes, when are you gonna be in the sixth ward?
I don't have a calendar to know when that's happening. I know they're finishing up with the first, and then they're moving to the seventh. I would presume yours, Mr. Glenn, is the next because we don't have as many stickies for the fourth ward on the calendar, on the map as we do for yours?
Reason I ask, though, because I think this happened two or three years ago. We had in our committee there.
Yeah.
And we had folks have to move because we had the cat problem. And I know I was very patient enough, other wards got, you know, you set the traps in other people, other wards already, which is fine, but I know I had a big cat problem on Lincoln, at Lincoln Place in State in Jamison, they was calling me about that. And I told them, when we come to meeting tonight, I will figure out something. I made the call in yesterday.
Okay.
For about six, seven streets over there.
Great, thank you, that would be very helpful.
In them areas. And I know that, I told them we was working on it, and you had a cat trap in some of the areas, though, and I said, I didn't know anything about it, though, but the deal is, though, it is some folks are putting stuff in them, and they shouldn't. I told them, we need to do this, this costs us money, and costs us money, big money, about these things getting tore up like that. And I was echo a little bit about Jesse, because I was looking at him a little bit about it, too. It will be a win-win situation if we go through that way of doing that. We're getting more cats, we'll save money, and it will help people out, you know?
One thing people can do, folks in your wards, we do rent out those traps as well, and we can coordinate with caregivers, as Mr. Low suggested, of course. We can coordinate with caregivers to give them the traps to set out. Now, we do ask for a deposit on that to make sure that we get them back, but the deposit is reimbursed then when they come in. We need an army of people. Right now, we have four, well, three and a half, because Brianna's so big. It's, we don't have staff, and we put out through emails, mass emails to everyone on our volunteer list. We do post on our Facebook pages, if you're interested in helping, contact us, get a hold of us, we'll set you up, we'll let you know, and we don't hear back.
Can we make it out of internship for veterinaries? You know, you got some veterinaries in school or-
We're working on that, yeah.
Just put an internship together for them guys to work so many hours and do it.
And they have to be overseen by a vet. We do not have an on-staff vet. The vets volunteer their time. We're working with various schools to try and put this, we have a lot of plans for next year.[1740.03] This has been a very learning year for us in getting this done. So we do have a lot of plans for next year on how to do that, and getting students in, just like human doctors, in the last year or so of their rotation, they're on a surgical rotation. So we are talking to the schools about setting up so that those students at that point in their career can do part of their surgical rotation with us, overseen by a vet, but we need a vet that's willing to have them work, because they're working under that vet's license, and some vets are a little squeamish about letting a student onto their malpractice insurance. So these are things we're talking about for next year. We're trying to get through this year with what we've got to work with and get those 350 cats we promised you, at 50 per ward. And then when we come back, let next year, probably won't be in our year-end presentation, although it might be, we want to totally what our plans are for next year and how we want to make this better and how we want to make this work. We're not overconfident in thinking that we have a shoe-in, that you will support us financially next year. We know the city finances are not always the best with cuts in government funding, et cetera, but we do appreciate your support, even if it's not financial, and we do want to keep you informed on what we're doing.
But it did help. A lot of folks are very happy we are attempting to do this, so.
We're trying.
I appreciate council.
Thank you, sir.
What they did, and appreciate what you guys are doing, because a lot of folks, some folks moved because we had this problem.
It is a problem.
And.
You've got cat fights, you've got spraying, you've got, yeah.
I wish I could bring Ms. Wiggins back, because this problem started on Eureka Street.
Oh, okay.
And I mean, and it's very upsetting when she had to move, because we did not react on it right away, and I feel I didn't react on it right away myself, and I apologize.
That's a shame.
But she was tired of it, though.
Yeah, that's understandable. Thank you, sir.
Thank you so much. Done, Mr. President.
Any other questions? Right. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Report. Moving on to the agenda, the consent calendar, Ms. Townsend.
Mr. President.
Ms. Townsend.
I move that item B on the consent calendar be received and filed, and item A be received, filed, and approved.
Second. The motion, the second, is to receive, file, and approve item A, and to receive and file item B. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. Communication number one.
From the Director of Community Development regarding legislation to place tax assessments.
Mr. President.
Ms. Adams.
I move that communication number one be received and filed. Legislation is on tonight's agenda.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to receive and file communication number one. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. Communication number two.
From the Director of Community Development regarding agreements for home projects.
Mr. President.
Ms. Adams.
I move that communication number two be received and filed. Legislation is on tonight's agenda.
Second.
The motion, excuse me, the motion, the second, is to receive and file communication number two. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Abstain.
The motion carries with one abstention. Communication number three.
From the Director of Community Development regarding agreements for the CDBG projects.
Mr. President.
Ms. Adams.
I move that communication number three be received and filed. Legislation is on tonight's agenda.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to receive and file communication number three. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. Communication number four.
From the Finance Director regarding legislation to enter into a contract for temporary work in the Finance Office.
Mr. President. Mr. Teppin.
I move that communication number four be received and filed. Legislation is on tonight's agenda.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to receive and file communication number four. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Aye.
The motion carries. Communication number five.
From the Ohio Division of Liquor Control regarding a new permit for vobocce at 59 Town Square.
Mr. President. Mr. Low.
Move that communication number five be received and filed, and the clerk authorized to file, with no objections to the Ohio Division of Liquor Control.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to receive and file communication number five, and authorize the clerk to notify the Ohio Division of Liquor Control with no objection. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. Communication number six.
From the Ohio Division of Liquor Control regarding a new permit for TLD Ohio at 701 West North Street.
Mr. President.
Mr. Low.
I move that communication number six be received and filed, and the clerk authorized to file with no objections to the Ohio Division of Liquor Control.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to receive and file communication number six, and to authorize the clerk to notify the Ohio Division of Liquor Control with no objection. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. Communication number seven.
From the Director of Utilities requesting legislation to renew an agreement with GE Funk Intelligent Platforms.
Mr. President.
Mr. McLean.
I move that communication number seven be received and filed, and authorize the law director to prepare any necessary legislation.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to receive and file communication number seven, and to authorize the law director to prepare the necessary legislation. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. Communication number eight.
From the Director of Utilities requesting legislation to enter into a contract for construction manager at risk.
Mr. President.
Mr. McLean.
I move that communication number eight be received and filed, and authorize the law director to prepare any necessary legislation.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to receive and file communication number eight, and to authorize the law director to prepare any necessary legislation. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. Communication number nine.
From the Director of Public Works regarding legislation to amend the contract with ET Engineering.
Mr. President.
Mr. Nieper.
I move that communication number nine be received and filed.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to receive and file communication number nine. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. Communication number 10.
From the Director of Public Works regarding legislation to make additional payment to ODOT for state Route 65 rehabilitation.
Mr. President.
Mr. Nieper.
I move that communication number 10 be received and filed.
Second.
Motion, the second, is to receive and file communication number 10. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. Communication number 11.
From the Director of Public Works regarding legislation to amend the contract with ASC Grouping.
Mr. President.
Mr. Nieper.
I move that communication number 11 be received and filed.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to receive and file communication number 11. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. Communication number 12.
From the Deputy Director of Public Works requesting legislation to enter into a contract for purchase of tow truck and assault spreader and two passenger vehicles.
Mr. President.
Mr. Nieper.
I move that communication number 12 be received and filed, and authorize the law director to prepare the necessary legislation.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to receive and file communication number 12, and to authorize the law director to prepare the necessary legislation. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. Communication number 13.
From the Deputy Director of Public Works requesting legislation to enter into a contract for real purchases for 2014.
Mr. President.
Mr. Nieper.
I move that communication number 13 be received and filed, and authorize the law director to prepare any necessary legislation.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to receive and file communication number 13, and to authorize the law director to prepare any necessary legislation. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. They'll have ordinances, ordinance 18213.
Loving Special Assessments for Property Maintenance Code charges on premises in the City of Lima, Ohio.
Mr. President.
Ms. Adams.
I move that ordinance number 182-13 be passed on its first reading.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to pass ordinance 18213 on its first reading. Is there any discussion? I'll have the clerk call the roll.
Mr. Nieper.
Yes.
Mr. McLean.
Yes.
Mr. Low.
Yes.
Mr. Teppin.
Yes.
Ms. Adams.
Yes.
Mr. Glenn.
Yes.
Ms. Townsend.
Yes.
And Mr. Nixon.
Yes. Ordinance 18213 has been passed on its first reading by an eight to zero vote. Ordinance 18313.
Authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with System Innovators.
Mr. President.
Mr. McLean.
I move that ordinance number 18313 be passed on its first reading.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to pass ordinance 18313 on its first reading. Is there any discussion? I'll have the clerk call the roll.
Mr. Nieper.
Yes.
Mr. McLean.
Yes.
Mr. Low.
Yes.
Mr. Teppin.
Yes.
Ms. Adams.
Yes.
Mr. Glenn.
Yes.
Ms. Townsend.
Yes.
And Mr. Nixon.
Yes. Ordinance 18413 has been passed on its first reading by an eight to zero vote. Ordinance 18513.
Amending ordinance 713.
Mr. President.
Mr. Nieper.
I move that ordinance number 18513 be passed on its first reading.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to pass ordinance 18513 on its first reading. Is there any discussion? I'll have the clerk call the roll.
Mr. Nieper.
Yes.
Mr. McLean.
Yes.
Mr. Low.
No.
Mr. Teppin.
Yes.
Ms. Adams.
Yes.
Mr. Glenn.
Yes.
Ms. Townsend.
Yes.
And Mr. Nixon.
Yes. Ordinance 18713 has passed on its first reading by a seven to one vote. Ordinance 18813.
Authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with Lima Allen Council on Community Affairs to provide loan closing services and down payment assistance.
Mr. President.
Ms. Adams.
I move that ordinance 188-13 be passed on its first reading.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to pass ordinance 18813 on its first reading. Is there any discussion? I'll have the clerk call the roll.
Mr. Nieper.
Yes.
Mr. McLean.
Yes.
Mr. Low.
Yes.
Mr. Teppin.
Yes.
Ms. Adams.
Yes.
Mr. Glenn.
Yes.
Ms. Townsend.
Yes.
And Mr. Nixon.
Yes. Ordinance 18913 has been passed on its first reading by an eight to zero vote. Ordinance 18713.
Authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract for temporary labor services for the Finance Department.
Mr. President. Mr. Teppin. I move that ordinance 18713 be passed on its first reading.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to pass ordinance 18713 on its first reading. Is there any discussion?
Mr. President.
Mr. Glenn.
I want to say a couple of things there about that. I had opportunity to talk to temp service and restore our meeting on some of the issues that I feel that I feel, and a lot of folks need to understand. A lot of folks that talk to me about how the temp service is, I understand this is nothing about the folks that are working, there's a person that's off of work right now, and needs someone to come in and help. And I know I had a lot of questions about it, how I feel about the temp service. And over 40% of the folks in my area work temp service. That's a large percentage, and I want to make sure, I want to make sure that there's some of the issues there that I'm trying to make sure that the people there, they get a good base pay. And I know some people say, this ain't got nothing to do with this. It do have a lot to do with it. It have a lot to do with it, you know, and any company that do that. But we are getting some ways there, and I appreciate some of the temp companies talking to me, trying to find better ways, or we can use a part of training folks, making sure they get the job. Well, I'm looking at hiring the folks on the job. You know, they stay there six, seven months, we should have some stipulation. And I know legislation got to get that in there, and I'll be sending that down to Mr. Nieper when he get in office, and hoping that we can look at some of this stuff, because it got to be looked at, you know? We got a noticed the way of labor that come cheap with people. And I hate to throw that out there with Nate Nieper, but I'm throwing it out there. But we got to figure this out somehow. But I appreciate you guys sitting out, talking with me, and you trying to find a better way, and I know some folks don't like it, and I care less, because we got so many folks out there using. If he was in that seat earning that small amount of money, he won't like it either. He'll be complaining, too. So, thank you, Mr. President. I just want to get that out.
Thank you, Mr. Glenn. Is there any further discussion? I'll have the clerk call the roll.
Mr. Nieper.
Yes.
Mr. McLean.
Yes.
Mr. Low.
No.
Mr. Teppin.
Yes.
Ms. Adams.
Yes.
Mr. Glenn.
Yes.
Ms. Townsend.
Yes.
And Mr. Nixon.
Yes. Ordinance 187-13 has passed on its first reading by a seven to one vote. Ordinance 188-13.
Authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with Lima Allen Council on Community Affairs to provide loan closing services and down payment assistance.
Mr. President.
Ms. Adams.
I move that ordinance 188-13 be passed on its first reading.
Second. The motion in the second is to pass ordinance 188-13 on its first reading. Is there any discussion? I'll have the clerk call the roll.
Mr. Nieper.
Yes.
Mr. McLean.
Yes.
Mr. Low.
Yes.
Mr. Teppin.
Yes.
Ms. Adams.
Yes.
Mr. Glenn.
Yes.
Ms. Townsend.
Yes.
And Mr. Nixon.
Ordinance 188-13 has been passed on its first reading by an eight to zero vote. Ordinance 189-13.
To authorize the mayor to enter into a contract with New Lima Housing for the Future Inc. for administrative services under the city's housing program.
Mr. President.
Ms. Adams.
I move...
I'm sorry, I need to excuse myself.
You're in the window. I move that ordinance 189-13 be passed on its first reading.
It's been moved and seconded that ordinance 189-13 be passed on its first reading. Is there any discussion?
Hearing none, I'll have the clerk call the roll.
Mr. Nieper.
Yes.
Mr. McLean.
Yes.
Mr. Low.
Yes.
Mr. Teppin.
Yes.
Ms. Adams.
Yes.
Mr. Glenn.
Yes.
Ms. Townsend.
Stane.
And Mr. Nixon.
Yes. Ordinance 189-13 has been passed on its first reading by a seven to zero vote with one abstention.
What a tag team.
Ordinance 190-13.
To authorize the mayor to enter into a contract with New Lima Housing for the Future Inc. for housing maintenance training.
Mr. President.
Ms. Adams.
I move that ordinance 190-13 be passed on its first reading.
Second. The motion in the second is to pass ordinance 190-13 on its first reading. Is there any discussion? I'll have the clerk call the roll.
Mr. Nieper.
Yes.
Mr. McLean.
Yes.
Mr. Low.
Yes.
Mr. Teppin.
Yes.
Ms. Adams.
Yes.
Mr. Glenn.
Yes.
Ms. Townsend.
Stane.
And Mr. Nixon.
Yes. Ordinance 190-13 has been passed on its first reading by a seven to zero vote with one abstention. Ordinance 191-13.
Authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with Lima Allen Council on Community Affairs for housing counseling services.
Mr. President.
Ms. Adams.
I move that ordinance 191-13 be passed on its first reading.
Second. The motion in the second is to pass ordinance 191-13 on its first reading. Is there any discussion? I'll have the clerk call the roll.
Mr. Nieper.
Yes.
Mr. McLean.
Yes.
Mr. Low.
Yes.
Mr. Teppin.
Yes.
Ms. Adams.
Yes.
Mr. Glenn.
Yes.
Ms. Townsend.
Yes.
And Mr. Nixon.
Yes. Ordinance 191-13 has been passed on its first reading by an eight to zero vote. Ordinance 192-13.
Authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with Lima Allen Council on Community Affairs to provide fair housing services.
Mr. President.
Ms. Adams.
I move that 192-13 be passed on its first reading.
Second. The motion in the second is to pass ordinance 192-13 on its first reading. Is there any discussion? I'll have the clerk call the roll.
Mr. Nieper.
Yes.
Mr. McLean.
Yes.
Mr. Low.
Yes.
Mr. Teppin.
Yes.
Ms. Adams.
Yes.
Mr. Glenn.
Yes.
Ms. Townsend.
Yes.
And Mr. Nixon.
Yes. Ordinance 192-13 has been passed on its first reading by an eight to zero vote. Ordinance 193-13.
Authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with Rhodes State College for implementation of a manufacturing skills development program.
Mr. President.
Ms. Adams.
I move that 193-13 be passed on its first reading.
Second. The motion in the second is to pass ordinance 193-13 on its first reading. Is there any discussion? I'll have the clerk call the roll.
Mr. Nieper.
Yes.
Mr. McLean.
Yes.
Mr. Low.
Yes.
Mr. Teppin.
Yes.
Ms. Adams.
Yes.
Mr. Glenn.
Yes.
Ms. Townsend.
Yes.
And Mr. Nixon.
Yes. Ordinance 193-13 has been passed on its first reading by an eight to zero vote. Mislenious business, Mr. Nieper.
Nothing this evening.
You?
I have one thing. I just wanted everyone to remind everyone that the FOP's Annual Pancake Day is coming October 5th and I'm telling you, the tickets are about gone. The last time I was out there, I had to wait in line about a half hour to eat, so get your tickets, get them early. It starts at 6:00 a.m. till 1:00 p.m. I don't care when you get there, you're going to probably have to wait a little bit, but they feed you well and they take good care of you, so they'll be there. It's a good, for the fraternal order, the police, it's one of their best fundraisers, so appreciate your support. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McLean. Mr. Low?
Yes. Based on the... Ms. Lydell, did I say that right? Based on what she has brought us tonight, I do want to give, you know, as Counselor McGlynn said, the university, maybe they can get a rep out here, maybe assure you of some things if they could. I'd like to call Neighborhood Concerns Meeting September the 30th at 6:00 p.m. Refer the issue to the Neighborhood Concerns Committee, September the 30th at 6:00 p.m. Thank you, Sal.
Is there a second on that motion?
Second.
The motion in the second is to refer the issue of UNOH student activity and the concerns of Mrs. Lydell to the Neighborhood Concerns Committee. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries.
And on a light note, good note, some positive things. This morning about 7:30, I seen about three young kids, probably no bigger than the first grade, maybe second grade, and I seen a city truck. The gentleman rolled down his windows and that North, it was on the corner of Washington and North Street, and it's a very, very busy intersection, extremely busy during that time. And it was so nice, he rolled the window down, he had the kids halt, he talked to them to let them know when to go out, and he actually used the truck to block the west-going traffic off so these children could get across the street. And it was, it was a good idea, it was just good. And I was, I was so glad it was a city truck, I didn't know what to do. But, but it was really good to see that. When I see him, I'm going to say something to him. If he's watching, you did great. I didn't want to put his name out there, but he did very, very good. And the kids, you know, once they got across, they turned around and waved in appreciation. So, that's, that's what it's all about. That's what it's really what it's all about. That's all I had to say.
Thank you, Mr. Low and Mr. Teppin. Nothing this evening. Ms. Adams?
Thank you, Mr. President. First of all, there was a finance committee meeting this evening chaired by Counselor Teppin, and I would like to take this opportunity to thank him for his input and guidance through my committee on the issue of junk autos. Thank you, Mr. Counselor Teppin. Hope neighborhood meeting will be held October 1st, Tuesday at 6:30 at Unity Elementary School. Friday, I've been by the area a number of times, but Friday I was fortunate enough to see the students and meet the instructor from Lima Senior that is constructing the restroom at Cook Park. It's going along very well and I was there for about forty-five minutes and had a nice discussion with the instructor, took some pictures, and I've taken pictures in the past for the progression. Mr. Staley's been keeping me up to date as well when we bumped into each other, but it's looking great and it's a nice group of young people. Unfortunately, this weekend, and the community officers are on top of this, the fifth ward got hit very hard with some graffiti. I'm aware of ten locations and as Counselor Low has put out there, you know, a reward and, you know, successful conviction, I have, as he stated, you know, will match what he is putting forth and this needs to stop. And I thought we had this under control, obviously not, and it's hurting businesses, it's got a lot of people with a lot of pride and I guess there's going to be some cameras installed, so hopefully we'll catch them soon. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Ms. Adams. Mr. Glenn?
I got a couple of thing there. Mr. Sniffkey, I want to thank Mr. Sniffkey. We had an opportunity, we had a problem on Main Street there, almost on 10th there. And he came out and I appreciate him coming out, helped explain the ladder there where she was having problems. He also helped us, got someone to fix it, and I appreciate that. He gave us a paper there and she was very happy. She told me, bring his name up and they go thank him for it. He left his desk and came out there and spent almost an hour there explaining to her how it's go about, educated me on it too, how everything go. We sat out there and got it done. It was a while back, but I forgot to bring it up. She kept on reminding me, dear, thank him for what he did because he come the situation all the way down and what the city was responsible, what the resident was responsible, and I thank him for that. Also, I want to thank Mr. Low. We had a problem there on Ontario Street and he had opportunity to get on arrival first and he was there keeping the situation kind of calm and easy there and I appreciate that. And the city worker came out, we took care of that and thank you so much for that. Appreciate that because that could have got a little bit ugly, but it didn't. We all got that taken care of. But that's how we work in our city. We all work together and make a difference. We have a big day coming, Friday the 27th, and most people ask me why I put it on Friday 27th. It's our town hall meeting for parents to come out and we're going to talk about how could we occur, get this grade up for Lima City School.